Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 27, 2025 Regular Meeting of San Diego Community Power Board of Directors. I am Paloma Aguirre, Chair of the Board, representing the City of Imperial Beach. We welcome members of the public, community power staff, and board members joining us today at the Port of San Diego Administration Building. I will now call the meeting to order. Maddie, will you please call the roll?
Director Ilor Rivera? Director Nsunza?
I'm here.
Director San Antonio?
Present.
Director Suzuki? Director Yamani?
Here.
Flasher Lawson Reimer? Chair Aguirre?
Here.
We have a call, Madam Chair.
Great. Next on the agenda, we have the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that this meeting is taking place on the land of the original inhabitants of the Greater San Diego region. A land acknowledgement is a critical step toward working with native communities to create meaningful partnerships and inclusion in the stewardship and protection of their cultural resources and homelands. Let's take a moment to honor these ancestral grounds that were the traditional lands of the Pneiak. Thank you. Next, I'd like to acknowledge and express appreciation to the new members of the Finance and Risk Management Committee, Directors Yamani, Suzuki, and Nsunza. Thank you so much for stepping up and wanting to serve on our Finance and Risk Management Committee. Congratulations. And congratulations to Director Yamani on your appointment as Chair of the Finance Risk Management Assessment and Director Suzuki. Thank you. All right. No. Sorry. Thank you. All right. Do we have any items to be added, withdrawn, or reordered on the agenda? Being none, we will now take up a non-agenda public comment. I want to note that written public comments submitted before the board meeting were emailed to all directors prior to the meeting and will be posted online. Do we have any non-agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have Scott Andrews. Mr. Andrews, you have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Aguirre, Directors Nsunza, San Antonio, Yamani, Suzuki, CEO Burns. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Scott Andrews, the President and CEO of Neighborhood National Bank. We are a community bank that's been in San Diego County for 27 years. We're headquartered down in the South Bay. We're the only community development financial institution in San Diego County. And we're a mission-driven bank, and our mission is to serve low- and moderate-income communities, specifically minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, and to provide affordable housing in and throughout San Diego County. The designation for us as a CDFI indicates that 60% of our loans are to be done in low-modern income communities. We've spoken previously to the Finance Committee in regards to seeking deposits from San Diego Community Power. The bank's product is loans, and to fund those loans, we do require deposits. And our ask is that the Board and San Diego Community Power, along with Dr. Washington, who we've spoken to, consider placing $10 million with our bank. We know the reserves of San Diego Community Power total over 300 million, so it's a small percentage, about 3% of those reserves. Your reserves currently sit in a bank in Sacramento, for understanding, as well as New York City. So none of those deposits are here in San Diego County, where we would put those deposits to very good work and good use. The deposits with our bank would be fully FDIC insured. There'd be no risk of loss to San Diego Community Power. And what our pledge would be is that we would turn those deposits into loans to women-owned businesses, minority, veteran-owned businesses, as well as provide affordable housing. We do a number of affordable housing lending projects. So, you know, I think this is really a win-win opportunity for San Diego Community Power, for the Board, to put some of that money that your ratepayers have put into San Diego Community Power, place it in a local community bank, that we can then continue the good work that we're doing that matches the good work of San Diego Community Power. So, CEO Burns, we look forward to your potential meeting with you and CFO Washington to discuss that. So, thank you very much for giving me this time this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Any additional comments?
There are none, Madam Chair.
Great. We're going to now move on to consent calendar, items one through 10. Do any directors wish to pull items from the consent calendar? Being none? Do we have any public comment on consent?
There are none, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion to approve consent items number one through 10?
Motion to approve. Second.
Please call the roll.
Director Nsunza?
Yes.
Director San Antonio?
Hi.
Director Suzuki? Director Yamani?
Aye.
Chair Aguirre?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Now, we're going to move on to item 11, approved Community Advisory Committee member for the City of La Mesa. I will now turn it over to Jack Clark, Chief Operating Officer, to present the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, members of the Board, members of the public and community power staff. My name is Jack Clark. I'm the Chief Operating Officer here at Community Power. Back a slide, please. Our recommendation this afternoon is to approve the appointment of Sean Sumner to the Community Advisory Committee for the City of La Mesa. Next slide, please. Per Community Powers Joint Powers Authority Agreement, the Board established a committee advisory committee comprised of non-board members to advise the Board and provide a venue for ongoing citizen support and engagement in our strategic direction, goals, and programs. The Community Advisory Committee is advisory-only and does not have a decision-making authority, nor receives any delegation of authority from the Board. The Community Advisory Committee includes two members from each member agency. In terms of the selection process, each Board member may nominate a committee member, and the Board shall determine the final selection by a simple majority vote. When consigning appointments, the Board of Directors should seek to ensure that the CAC represents a diverse cross-section of interests and skill sets, and should prioritize members when feasible from diverse social, economic, and racial backgrounds that are representative of all residents within the service territory of Community Power. In December of 2024, staff announced a CAC vacancy for the City of La Mesa. The previous member in this seat, Lauren Gazares, vacated the role to assume a La Mesa City Council member seat. And we are deeply thankful for her service and her contributions. Since that time, staff promoted the vacancy via social media, the Board of Directors, the CAC, and directly engaging with member agency staff and the public, and has worked with Director Suzuki to review the process and determine a nomination for appointment based on membership terms and criteria. Director Suzuki has nominated Sean Sumner. Sean has an extensive background in public service with over 24 years in the industries of real estate development, sustainability, the environment, and planning. Most recently, he has managed and developed a portfolio of hundreds of ground leases and collaborated with multiple resource agencies throughout the years, including the California Coastal Commission. Sean is joining us here today to share more about himself with us and his background and interest in serving on our CAC. If approved by the Board with a simple majority vote today, staff will work with the representative to conduct their oath of office and onboarding prior to the next CAC meeting, scheduled for April 10 of this year. Staff will also update Attachment A, CAC roster, and seat assignments, which is publicly available through the Community Powers website to include the new representative. As of the drafting of this report, a seat for the City of Chula Vista still remains vacant, and applications for vacant seats remain open until filled. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, do we have any board member comments?
I just wanted to highly recommend Sean Sumner. Sean has been a fantastic member of our community, and also he's worked for the Port. This is familiar grounds for him for more than 20 years. And he's very familiar with working with public engagement and also how to navigate systems such as Community Power. So I think he'd be really wonderful. The other thing is that he's also an attorney, so I feel like it's another boon for him. So maybe that's just me, but I do think it's a good thing. But anyway, and also, most important, Sean is a La Mesa resident, and he has a wonderful family, very involved. So I would just really, with all my heart, put him forward and really hope that you are able to see, you know, how wonderful Sean is when he comes to speak. I'm sorry, Sean, I don't mean to like build you up too much and freak you out, but I'm just a big fan, and I know he'll do well. He's very easy to talk to, so thank you.
Well, I'm happy to second. And why don't we go ahead and do the vote, and then we'll invite Mr. Sumner to give remarks.
Aye.
Director Nsunza?
Yes.
Director San Antonio?
Hi.
Director Suzuki?
Aye.
Director Yamani?
Aye.
Chair Aguirre?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Sumner would like to give some remarks?
I even know how to work the podium.
Oh, okay. Those intangible skills.
Thank you so much, Directors, Chair, and staff, for the opportunity to be here. And thank you, Director Suzuki, for the nomination and the really kind words. I've had about 24 years of public service, all here in the Port of San Diego. This is very familiar territory. Last year, I went on my own and founded my own consulting firm. And although I love being an attorney, I'm not currently practicing. I'm just being a consultant right now. But what I do now is I try to do what I did at the Port. I try to bring partners together through complicated public-private partnerships, economic development, and I love commercial real estate. I'm really passionate about it. So I've had the privilege of working on some really big projects. Like, one of my most recent projects on the Port was dealer Pacific opening in May, and I'm so glad and thankful for that project opening to serve the community. But most important to me is not what I've done, but how I've done it. I focus on partnerships with great teams for the public benefit. I like service, which is why I'm back here before you today. I want to leave things better than where I am. And so I'm here today to offer whatever skills that I can, bring my background, perspective, and experience to this great organization. I'm also an EV owner, and I'm really passionate about electrification, and the mission of Affordable Team Power for San Diego is really resonating. And so thank you very much for selecting me today, and I look forward to serving you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here and for your remarks. And congratulations. We're now going to move on to item 12, to approve Contract with Power Settlements Consulting and Software LLC for professional services for energy trading risk management in a not-to-exceed amount of $4,115,956. Kenny Key, Director of Power Contracts, will present the item.
Thank you, Chair Gary and Board. Yeah, again, Kenny Key, Director of Power Contracts. If you go to the next slide, apologies, I'm going to start with a little bit of background here. I know a few of you weren't members of the Board when we first did this request for proposals for this vendor. So I just want to do a little bit of background as far as what we were going after and what the needs are. So this contract is for an energy trading risk management system. What does that mean? It means a lot of things, but I think the easiest framework to think about this is this is the backend database behind all of our power contracts, all of our load obligations, all of our compliance obligations. This is the database for all the hard work of our originations team, of our portfolio managers who are doing short-term trades. All of those have to go somewhere, be managed somewhere, be tracked somewhere, and have reporting. So this is the fundamental database. It's the software behind this. We currently are using a third party that is managing the software for us, so we don't have direct access to our deals and our trades. And so this is something we've been working on for about a year and a half now of trying to staff up and be able to bring this in-house. So it's typically broken down into front, middle, and back office functions. Again, the front office is taking those deals that our traders, originators work on and inputting those into the database. Middle office is a lot of risk management. This is where we collaborate a lot with our finance team, so we can do what's called mark-to-market on our trades and what the risks of those are. This is where pulling those finances into our performa when you guys are doing budget reviews. All that, again, has to come from the contracts on this backend database. And then finally, the back office, which is the team that I oversee most of, is settling these. So again, we have hundreds of contracts on a monthly basis that have to get settled. We have to have a system to validate that. So when we get invoices from various vendors that we work with, we have to validate those invoices and then settle those and track those for that, and then work with our accounting system. So that's high-level what the systems are. Next slide, please. Why we went after this and an RFP last year is it's critical for us to manage the risk of our portfolio. As we grow, as we have more online assets, it's critical to have this and, again, have accessibility and control of this in-house and not be reliant upon third parties. The new systems that we're proposing here today with the software, well, again, it's one of our strategic goals as far as the power services team is to reduce the risk. This is one of the big ways you can do that, right? You can't reduce your risk. You don't know what it is. You don't know what it is unless you have something in the monitor. And then how will it reduce that risk? Again, the data that goes in there, one, you can put better controls over it, so you work with our finance and risk team. Those can be implemented within the system, automated, so you can get better checks and balances. It also goes into reporting that goes both to our team, the finance team, the executive team, CEO, and evidently up to the Board. And again, I think the biggest, one of the other big things it does is there's inherently a risk of relying upon a third party for this, right? We're transferring things in ways that we can't put firm security controls over. And again, you don't have access to all the updated information. We're relying upon a third party and the timelines they have with the package. So again, this has been something that's been in the works. Next slide, please. So a little about the timeline for this. So we ran the RFP for these services nearly a year ago. So I think it was the last, like, end of Q2 of 2024. Through that very, very competitive process, we shortlisted two finalists. They were both very competitive. It was, again, a lot of our review committee going back and forth on very minor things between the two vendors of why we moved forward with one or the other. We took the primary vendor that we agreed upon to the Board last year in August and got approval before that contract. And we put the other vendor, which would typically be in our RFPs on what's called a waitlist, like, hey, just in case something doesn't work out, we can't get the contract finalized, or something goes on with implementation, you're on our waitlist, and we'll keep our relationship firm with you. One of the big reasons we do that is typically when vendors bid in to these solicitations, they put a price lock on their offering, and that could fluctuate over time. So one of the key advantages for us of putting them on the waitlist is typically we keep that price lock, and that is capital it might be. So unfortunately, after that August approval, we had challenges with implementation with the primary vendor. Unfortunately, this happened. Software is not necessarily always 100% systems, but they just go smoothly and work out. So things we saw in the demo phases, things we went through in the trial period that we did during the RFP unfortunately didn't materialize, and we had a lot of issues and delays with implementation. So we didn't take that lightly, but we did a lot of diligence with that and decided to invest for the organization to kind of cut ties at that time and move forward with our waitlist vendor, which is the motion we have today. So the vendor that we're proposing to move forward with, again, was one of the two finalists. Next slide, please. Their name is Power Settlements. They, again, have been around. They were founded in 2007. They're privately owned. If you give them credit or no, yes, energy, they're a major player in the space. They bought Power Settlements last year, so they're a fully-owned subsidiary, which gives them a lot of access to data that we're using in other applications anyway. They have over 50 customers right now. All of those customers are referenceable, which is a good sign for any types of vendors. If you go to the next slide, I wanted to give a little bit of an overview of what their software does. And again, this is very weedsy. I apologize for that. But again, these are the core things that our team is doing as far as all those front, middle, back office functions I mentioned before. This is a fully-integrated system that can combine all of those. It'll work well with our analytics vendor and where the data feeds go in. And again, really gives us insights, access, and control over all of our contracting data, which is critical. Next slide, please. This is a slight overview of some of their clients. I put this in here just to reference. You know, one of the things that we think should be a real win for us with this vendor in particular is they've worked with other CCAs before. They have several other CCAs in their client list that they've had successful implementations and have successfully operated with them for a number of years, as well as other municipal utilities that operate similarly to us. So it's a little more of a turnkey approach with them. They know exactly what we're looking for. They know exactly the type of products and contracts we typically work with and can turn things on for us all very quickly. Next slide, please. So again, our staff recommendation is, again, it was unfortunate that things didn't work out with the primary lender, but again, our recommendation is to move forward with this vendor as our secondary waitlist vendor. The do-not-exceed limit approval here, this is for like the full scope. So I just want to mention one thing to the Board is we put a do-not-exceed in these contracts, which includes a lot of potential optional scope that could come in over the five years. There's an additional budget that we work with finance that is much lower than this, that like we're really managing through on a yearly basis. So this, I would view as like the worst-case scenario. If we turn everything on, if we license all the optional modules, if we scale up our contracts and PPAs, we need to work with them, this is what the biggest exposure could be. I will note, this is about $200,000 to $300,000 less than the prior contract, so overall, it should save some money. I also think on the yearly budget, the lower number that we work with finance with, without the option modules, it'll also be lower on a yearly basis, on an annual basis as well. These costs have already been included and approved in the budget. So again, we've had this as a line item in the budget for a couple times. So the full budget review, as well as the last inch and one that the Board did, so these wouldn't be additional costs. And again, we think as we reduce some of our reliance on outside third-party vendors and bring a lot of this in-house, there's going to be a lot of other cost savings that ultimately should make this pretty cost-neutral over the term of the contract compared to what we're currently paying for third parties. With that, I'll pause and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. We're going to go to public comment first. Do we have any requests to speak?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, so next, we're going to turn it over to Board members for any comments, questions. Director Yamani?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for the presentation. I believe that I think we can just see how proactive the direction of our CEO and things like this happens. And since it is cost-neutral, you know, I mean, it's a win-win for us. So thank you for the presentation.
Any other comments, requests to speak? Seeing none, I do have a question, and it's more to do with always having a Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. So what is our off-ramp option in case something similar happens with this vendor? I don't foresee that happening. I trust absolutely what you described is they're very capable, they're very experienced, they've been around since 2007, but it's always good to have a plan.
Yeah, no, no, great, great question. And again, we did not take this lightly. And you know, this is potentially putting some risk in some of the timelines we had in the system in the 2025 period. So I think I'd be hesitant to say there'd be a third vendor from that solicitation. I think if this didn't work out, I would recommend we open up a new RFP for this. I think our fallback option right now would be to currently use a third-party Pacific Energy Advisors to manage our ETR system. You'll hear later from our Chief Commercial Officer Byron about adjustments we're doing to that contract in anticipation of this being a successful implementation. But we are building in backstops in that where we could increase the timeline with those services in case something does go wrong, right? If this implementation, again, the last thing I want to do is set us up for five years in a bad relationship. So if we get three, six months in here, and it doesn't seem like it's going to work out, unfortunately, I might come back to you guys. I really hope that doesn't happen. But I think that, you know, we always got to think through that. And so I think that's our worst-case scenario right now. Fallout option would be we continue with the status quo of having to rely upon our third-party debt, and we'll happily go out with other request proposals.
I feel satisfied with that answer, and I do look forward to, you know, bringing these services in-house because eventually it will save us money in the long run. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item. So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Director Ilor Rivera? Director Nsunza?
Yes.
Director San Antonio?
Hi.
Director Suzuki?
Yes.
Director Yamani?
Aye.
Flasher Lawson Reimer?
Aye.
Chair Aguirre?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Now, we're going to move on to item number 13, approved Resource Adequacy and TB4 Agreement with Athos Storage LLC. Andrea Torres, Associate Director of Originations, will present the item.
Good evening, Chair Aguirre and Board of Directors. As I mentioned, my name is Andrea Torres. I'm Associate Director of Originations and Power Services, depending on to Byron Bosberg. Today, I'm here to present to you a request for approval to execute a 15-year contract for the Athos Storage Project. A little background on the project. Athos Storage is a standalone battery energy storage project being developed by SB Energy. It is a four-hour battery, the portion that we are, that we'd like to contract for is for 200 megawatts of a larger 402-megawatt facility located in Riverside County, more specifically Desert Center. And the image here shows it is going to be co-located with an operational 450-megawatt TB plant. Next slide. A few key terms of this contract. So the product includes a resource adequacy agreement coupled with TB4 hedge, and I'll explain a little bit of that in a moment. This project really originally came to us via a 2023 solicitation where we were looking to engage on a limited-scope basis with a number of projects to help support their efforts to get deliverability from CAISO. And this is important because one of the key measures of viability that CAISO looks at when prioritizing shortened supply deliverability is deciding, do they have an operating capacity for any project? So we had presented to the Board for approval back in January of 2024 a five-year RA-only contract in support of that effort. The project was subsequently awarded deliverability, and the contract I'm presenting to you today is the result of negotiations that kicked off after the project received deliverability. The TB4, top-bottom-four-hedge structure, is new to San Diego Community Power in our long-term contracting. So I thought I'd just briefly explain the structure. It's essentially comprised of a fixed monthly energy settlement rate paid by Community Power to Athos in exchange for the aggregate settlement, daily settlement that takes the top four hours in CAISO's day-ahead market, settle that a trading hub SB15 against the lowest four hours of every given day. So it essentially maximizes that energy arbitrage opportunity that we're looking for in a standard full-fledged manner. As with our other long-term contracts, we do have certain guaranteed milestones that may have to be met for these newbuild projects. And so we're entitled to financial compensation of lucrative damages if those milestones aren't met. And then once the project's operational, one of the key financial consequences is failure to deliver a guaranteed RA amount over the lifetime. Next slide. So just a few points about SB Energy's experience as a developer. They were founded in 2019. They're backed by SoftBank Group and Ares Climate Infrastructure Investment Firm. And this really enables them to fully finance and construct projects that they build, own, and operate. They are, SB Energy is a long-term owner of these assets. They're a California-based company. They own and operate over 1.5 gigawatts across the US of solar and growing storage. In California, the 450 megawatts represented here is the co-located Athos solar resources that are adjacent to this project. And they have a much larger pipeline of solar and storage, one of which is with the Pelican's Jaw project that we, the Board, approved the prior year. They also were one of the early developers to successfully take advantage of the domestic market matter, and so they were recognized for that. That adder is available through the inclusion reduction. Next slide. So this project will have a guaranteed commercial operation date in the top of 2027, and so it will contribute 200 megawatts of resource adequacy for our obligations. The hedge agreement, as I mentioned earlier, it does The hedge agreement, as I mentioned earlier, it does maximize the energy arbitrage spread throughout the day. But it also relieves us of the bidding and scheduling obligation and responsibilities that are kind of standard with our full agreements. So we're taking on that, you know, risk of fully optimizing the bidding strategy to maximize this reference. Pricing is competitive with our recent solicitations, including our All Source CFO. In addition, the long-term capacity that we've locked in this contract and the energy arbitrage value provides us with uncertainty and value over the length of the contract. A few points about workforce development and community benefits. So like the Pelican's job project, SBE is consistently committed to engaging in a project labor agreement of construction for these projects. This particular project will bring up to fifty clean energy jobs, as well as two old kind of public jobs that's in operation. They'll also be providing a two hundred thousand dollar contribution toward our community benefits fund, which we paid within sixty days. I believe that is my last slide.
Thank you so much, Mr. Torres. We're going to go now to public comment.
We don't have any, Madam Chair.
Then we're going to turn it over to the board for any comments, questions.
Seeing none. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the proposed fifteen-year resource adequacy and TB4 agreement with Athos Storage LLC in substantially final form for a two hundred megawatt four-hour battery energy storage facility and authorize a chief executive officer to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
Second. So move. I thought you were making the motion. I'm making the motion, or I'm making the second.
Okay, you make the motion, you second it. Okay, please call the room.
Director Yulivira. Director Inzunza.
Yes.
Director San Antonio.
Hi.
Director Suzuki.
Yes.
Director Yamani.
Hi.
Vice Chair Lawson Reimer.
Hi.
Chair Aguirre.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Torres. We'll now move on to item fourteen. Approved amended and restated renewable power purchase agreement with Yellow Pine Solar Three LLC. Kenny Key, Director of Power Contract, will give the presentation.
Okay, back again. Yeah, I think you're stuck with me for a little bit now. So next slide, please. Okay, so this is a project that originally came to Community Power back in solicitation we ran in twenty twenty-two. So it dates pretty far back. It was approved by the board in June of twenty twenty-three. We have an optake agreement and a PPA right now for a small portion of a larger facility out there. So I believe the total facility size, don't quote me on this, but I believe it's around two hundred fifty or three hundred megawatts. So we have a small portion of it that was priced very favorably when we originally contracted it. So we have thirty-five megawatts of solar photovoltaics and thirty-five megawatts of four-hour battery. It's a very well-known developer, Nextera, and it's in Clark County, Nevada, but KISO interconnected and most notably, which is basically not having to get import rights for state projects. The original contract had a guaranteed commercial operation date in twenty twenty-five. So maybe later on this year, this project would be online. This specific project and projects near it, all in the recent studies from KISO, were subject to delays in their deliverability related to delays in a major network upgrade. There's, I think, close to two gigawatts of energy that's going to be affected in and around this area, including this project. And there was a network upgrade that is kind of a combination of three different utilities in that area that was originally slated to be completed in the teens in sort of the quarter twenty twenty and is now the revised timeline. They originally proposed somewhere between twenty-eight and twenty-thirty. After a lot of pushback from both the developers, the IOUs, SCLS, and the CCAs in the state, they were to bring that timeline into twenty twenty-seven. So what that means is for all of the projects that are behind and relying upon a network upgrade, they will not be awarded deliverability. Walking that all the way to the end here, if they don't have deliverability, they cannot provide RA to their optakers or resource adequacy. But most times, these projects are not viable if they aren't getting the revenues from that. So they typically need to shift their timelines. In almost all cases, it does not make sense for them to continue development in the energy-only projects. They just can't justify the revenues for that shorter period of time. So what we worked with them on over the last year is how do we amend this contract to move that CD date out and make it still viable for us and work for our agency? And I'll note that, again, because we are a small portion of a larger project, they had to amend every optake agreement. And they're kind of working with four different parties here. We all have to be roughly aligned. So there are some limitations we have versus amending contracts here. So I'll take care. Next slide, please. So with this contract, again, this is a full power purchase agreement. So we will have energy, we'll have renewable energy attributes, ancillary services, capacity attributes related to the battery and the charging and discharging, as well as significant resource adequacy, adequacy benefits. This is a twenty-year contract. And again, the major timeline change here and the major portion of this amendment is the shifting out that guaranteed commercial operation date to twenty twenty-seven. Depending upon if that network upgrade comes along with timeline in twenty-seven that is finalized, they may be able to provide RA in twenty-seven, although we are holding them firm to an RA guaranteed date by June of twenty-eight. What that means is under this contract, even if that upgrade is delayed or there's other issues with deliverability, they will still have a guaranteed fixed RA amount that they owe us. If they don't provide that, there's penalty provisions in the contract for us to fight on that. They can either provide replacement that's equivalent or penalty provisions. So we kept a lot of those protections in this contract to make sure any additional delays like that should all be baked into this contract, and we should not be on the hook financially. There's a lot of procurement risk that's out there if that RA guarantee not show up. So we wanted to make sure that was there. And again, we have our, we kept our traditional financial compensation in there. If there's other delays in construction or if they, if they don't hit performance guarantees in the term of the contract. Next slide, please. So again, fairly major amendment, but again, relatively simple to break down what the scope of this is. So again, we're shifting the guaranteed commercial operation date. Notably, like I mentioned on the last slide, keeping the RA guaranteed date in twenty-eight. So making sure like that cannot be adjusted anymore. We did, we were able to negotiate a pricing reduction on this. Again, there's a higher value for a twenty-five or twenty-six project than you typically would see for a twenty-seven or twenty-eight project. So we were able to work with them and give the economics of this more favorable. And there were several cleanup edits. Sometimes it's nice to go back, and we're part of these is really clean up the whole contract. One of the major things, I think you noticed this that last month, when I took a couple of other amendments here, is the slice of day requirements now. Those weren't contemplated in twenty-three when a lot of these original contracts went in place. So we have a lot more protections around how that's accounted for. If there is any shortfalls from the facility, how we handle replacement and the penalties associated with that. So a lot of that cleanup work went into the amendment scope. Next slide, please. So again, just a summary here, because this has a storage component. Again, just want to kind of highlight some of the battery technology. Again, Nextera is one of the largest developers in the country. They have a really good relationship with all the top-tier battery manufacturers and have a really good track record of safety and development with the current projects that are online. All of these systems are containerized, which is again, what you'll probably see on the board. I don't think we need anything else in market besides containerized systems. But again, make sure if there are any issues, it's segmented to just small portions of the battery and not the whole facility. There's detection systems, temperature systems, robust monitoring systems. And again, fairly significant plans that they do with the first responders in the area. So I know the state is working on some revised requirements. Most of those are kind of playing catch-up where the industry and optakers have been for a couple of years now. So I think you'll see them and others are kind of already a little ahead of requirements. Next slide, please. Just to reemphasize, none of this really changed from the original agreement. But just wanted to, for those of you who aren't here, we took this. Again, or AD construction jobs, two permanent jobs. This project will use union labor, so it will be full PLA for the project. As you can see here, they've worked extensively in this area. This isn't the only project in Nevada in the local community. So they've, they've really done a good job of creating good relationships with those local communities. This is a small, this I had to cut back to fit on the slide of all the things they're doing locally for scholarships, for schools, for STEM, and things like that. So I think they've shown why this isn't local to us. I think they've shown similar values to Community Power of wanting to give back to the local community and really encourage training now in these areas. Next slide, please. So again, the, our analysis, again, we didn't want to fully lose a project. We wanted to try to find a win-win as much as we could to keep these renewable attributes and resource adequacy benefits in our portfolio. Again, this will help us on a path to one hundred percent. It'll also help us, we do have midterm liability resource adequacy requirements with the, even with the revised commercial operation dates, it'll help us meet those obligations. Again, the pricing is very competitive. We were able to, again, even bring that down a little bit more to get more competitive in this round. And this is a very, very highly experienced developer. Again, it's a large project where we're a small portion of the optake. So again, this wasn't ideal, but again, it wasn't something that they necessarily control over. And I think we have a lot of confidence in the rest of the timeline. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Key. We're going to turn it over to public comment if there's any.
There are none, Madam Chair.
So any questions or comments from board members? Director Yamani.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In June of twenty twenty-three, I was still swimming here. So, you know, I mean, but now I have a, you know, with your, with the, with the education that you had provided as directors, I can understand it better. I appreciate the mitigating factors when there is a shortfall on the delivery of the deliverables. I believe that's very thoughtful for it to happen, CEO. I wish that the community benefits is going to the region. And I know that Byron is laughing, smiling, I mean, because, you know, that's always my, my deep point is, where's the community benefit coming to our region? But, you know, I mean, in June twenty twenty-three, you passed that because I was like, where are we going? But thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Any other comments or questions?
I do have a quick question regarding the training for emergency first responders. How often is that? Is that at a yearly basis? Because things are changing so fast and it's such a new field of firefighting, I guess you could say. So how frequent is that?
Not my expertise, but my understanding is that is an annual, it says an annual updated requirement.
So it's ongoing, it's not just the one and done?
Yeah, I think there, my, my experience on the developer side with this is there's typically a fairly robust initiation training, like before the project goes online. And then kind of, I, I would say it's not as robust every year after that, but there is still like a training, keeping the safety protocols up to date. And typically, that's both. Sometimes that is mandated by the state or the agency. Oftentimes, that's the developer has safety protocols they have to meet in order for like their insurance requirements, other things like that. That's typically one of the things they roll into the overall safety program.
Okay, that's great to hear. Thank you. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the item. Move to approve recommendation, Madam Chair.
Second.
Please call the room.
Director Yulivira. Director Inzunza.
Yes.
Director San Antonio.
Hi.
Director Suzuki.
Yes.
Director Yamani.
Hi.
Vice Chair Lawson Reimer.
Hi.
Chair Aguirre.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we're going to go to item fifteen, approved amendments to long-term resource adequacy agreements with EnerSmart. Kenny Key, again, will give the report.
I promise I'll be out of here after this one. So yeah, so this one will hopefully speak to you on the, on the local benefit side. So next slide, please. So again, these are amendments to four of six contracts we have currently executed with EnerSmart. All of these are resource adequacy only agreements. So again, we're not contracting everything from these projects, but we are contracting long-term for the resource adequacy benefits. Of the six that we originally took to the board and got approval between Q2 and Q3 of twenty twenty-three, two of the other projects based on other issues are not going to move forward. And so these are the four remaining projects that, that are viable in their portfolio that they've contracted with us. So these, similar story to these other projects that we've been talking about. Again, I think one of the board members, I think it was, or San Antonio, asked me last time, you know, what are the issues that you can help bring up with your constituents or municipalities? And I, I think we're continuing to see impacts of network upgrade delays both on large-scale transmission interconnected projects, as well as smaller projects like these that are local and distribution level interconnected. So because of that, there's, there was supposed to be, again, within every IOU territory, what they call the fast-track process to get deliverability for smaller, typically sub-five, long time seventy-one megawatt projects that are distribution level interconnected, which means they don't require upgrades at the transmission level. These are like the smaller transmission lines that typically are easier to update. And again, a lot of times not as congested and hold on as the larger transmission lines. That process has kind of really failed us across the state, but definitely is currently having issues in San Diego. We were probably one of the IOU territories that is going to see this first, that are going to be really digging this issue mostly. That is, the blessings and curses of having rates as we do is it tends to be an area where there's the biggest rate variance. So for smaller projects like this, if you're a battery, the way you capitalize and make money off that project is to have a lot of rate variance between peak and off-peak prices. That's how you can maximize the value of those projects. That makes San Diego a really enticing place from an economic perspective. As they've come in, they've both struggled with permitting issues, and then now these network upgrade issues, interconnection issues that are delaying the timelines for them to receive deliverability that then allows them to provide RA to optakers like us. So next slide, please. And I'll highlight this because one of these projects, which again, we originally contracted in twenty-three, came online in twenty-three, is still waiting for, to get a deliverability award. So that, those projects should be at the top of the list. If you have a contract, you're online, and you're operational, those are at the very top of the list. And the fact that we have projects that are as small as one point five megawatts that are still getting delayed in how they're studied on the timelines for those and are still being told this could be another two- to three-year experiment to get back to them. It just highlights the challenges that our local rules have with deliverability. So the contracts that we have here is for a total of ten point five megawatts of net qualifying capacity. That is how resource adequacy is measured. Their projects, these are in Alcohona, Imperial Beach, Mesa Heights, and Chula Vista. The Chula Vista project, as I mentioned, is already operational and online. It just can't provide resource adequacy right now. Mesa Heights is in the construction phase, and then the other two are earlier stage in development. Next slide, please. So similar, as I just mentioned, again, these are local resource adequacy. So again, we have both from the state level system resource adequacy, which is throughout the state, and then local requirements. So this helps with those local requirements. We also have local just goals that the organization, the board puts on itself for local development and capacity related to that, these would apply to. We had to get fairly creative with these. The main ask that the developer has here is for smaller developers, it's really hard to project finance something if you can, if there's a termination right in the contract. Our original contracts with EnerSmart for these, essentially, if two years after their guaranteed deliverability date, they don't have it, it would terminate. That's really hard for them to go to banks and get finance. And they, these are, these developers are typically too small to balance sheet finance if there's not a firm timeline on when they are going to have deliverability. So we really wanted to be, if this wasn't a local project, we probably wouldn't have spent all this time and effort. But we really wanted to work with them and how do we keep these projects viable? Because there's benefits, even if they come online, even if they don't provide you RA for, for our local constituents. And so we worked on kind of a tiered pricing structure where the price we pay for the RA will decrease every year that the deliverability is not provided, we're not getting RA. So that allows us, we were willing at that point commercially to be okay not having a termination right for ten years, but really protect us and other carriers of not having overpaid for resource adequacy that may not be provided to us until twenty thirty or twenty thirty-five. And so we want to be cognizant of that, and, you know, we don't have a crystal ball of what resource adequacy pricing might be there. So again, hopefully it creates a solution, and again, something we would do for smaller local projects to keep them here and keep them viable and financeable, most importantly. Next slide, please. So these amendments, for three of the four, we are shifting the term from ten years to fifteen years. So that does put, again, So these amendments for three of the four, we are shifting the term from ten years to fifteen years. So that does put again, a little bit more burden there, but again, provides them more financial security on the revenue side. They the original agreements didn't allow for this interim deliverability. This is kind of a quasi-status before you have what's called full deliverability interim status. So there's a world where if those upgrades haven't fully been completed, but they don't see that local interconnection point be congested, they can provide you interim deliverability and you can still provide resource adequacy. So we're allowing them that. We have a pricing structure that benefits us if that does take longer on time. Again, all the slice a day benefit clauses that I talked about previously. And again, these are required. Without these, if we do not amend these, you know, these projects, one, the ones that aren't already in the construction phases, so Alcoa and Imperial Beach, likely aren't moving forward if they cannot have these types of amendments to allow them to secure financing. Next slide, please. Okay, so workforce development. So here have some some good news to share here. So again, these being local projects, we really want to encourage local labor and ideally local union labor as often as possible. So one of these projects is already developed. So the Chula Vista project is online. They should be in labor for that. It was a great win for for everybody. The Mesa Heights project is already in the construction phase. So again, we're only all taking the RA. So again, they will work as best they can with local unions and with with local labor for that, but we have little control at this point as far as what they're giving. The other two projects, so for the Imperial Beach and for the Alcoa Home projects, we were able to, again, sometimes these negotiations go to the last minute. So when we originally posted these contracts, we didn't have the fully baked terms in there, but I'm happy to say, and you'll kind of see the amended recommendation that for those two projects that have not taken construction phase yet, we have gotten the developer to work with the local union reps and us and negotiate a compromise on for these smaller projects. It's typically hard to do a full project labor agreement, but they have agreed to language that was amenable to both sides of eighty percent local or union labor requirement as well as a unionized C-ten requirement to all the electrical electric work on the project. So that's hopefully a pretty big win again for our local workforce and local benefits. All of these, regardless of that, I've committed to prevailing wages. That's pretty standard now in the state. And again, these are providing clean energy to our local neighborhoods, offsetting the runtime and necessity of local natural gas as peaking facilities. So again, I'm trying to encourage that. And again, the more local infill projects we do like this, the less large scale transmission that has to be built out. And so I think that's really something we're trying to go in with here. Next slide, please. All right. So again, battery technology is again, abides by all of the local, the new requirements for these. It underwent all the the normal testing. They work with one of the larger developers of battery storage systems. Again, these are all containerized and that. So I feel really good on that front. And again, the the two that are later stage have already fully completed all of the permitting requirements. And one's been operational and operating safely for a little over a year now. Next slide, please. So again, these will help contribute to our local capacity goals and requirements. Again, these are later stage projects and really important to our portfolio. The pricing is very competitive, especially with the waterfall that we were able to build into the new contract. And again, these are these are kind of, these are what local info looks like. And so I really want us, hopefully, we can encourage and hopefully have your support to make music and keep these projects moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. T, we're gonna go to public comment if there's any.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have Christina online.
Proceed.
Christina.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Good evening, Madam Chair and Directors. IBW five sixty-nine and its thirty-eight hundred power professionals and union electricians support this long-term resource adequacy agreement with EnerSmart for the following reasons. They have committed to using a local workforce. They have committed to using licensed C-ten electrical contractors who hire state certified electricians, as Mr. Key said. They will, there will be a twenty percent journeyman to apprenticeship ratio for the qualifying contractors' work from a joint labor management electrical apprenticeship. This helps to fight climate change. And SDCP is providing more power and increasing their portfolio. IBW five sixty-nine wants to ensure storage projects are installed by a skilled and trained workforce of electricians who have been training on these types of projects for years and go above and beyond the required certifications for energy storage projects to include ESAMTEC, it's acronym for Energy Storage and Microgrid Training, which is not required, required, but we've been training our apprentices on it since twenty eighteen. I want to especially thank staff, Mr. Key, thank you, in ensuring all of this language is in the agreement. He works to give these projects the best opportunity to be installed by professional electricians. And Madam Chair, one of your questions on the last project, you were wondering about safety and preparation. There's a bill out SB two eight three layered. It's for battery energy storage facilities and energy emergency response plans. It would include having the fire marshal approve these types of projects prior to the project. We want to make sure that these projects are done safely, installed safely, maintained safely, so that there are no issues at all afterwards, once they're installed. I appreciate your time and thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you so much. Any additional public comments?
No more, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're gonna turn it over to board comments or questions.
Similar question to what I then to what I asked last month, I'll probably keep asking it. When when you flag these issues around how long it's taking to get some of some of these projects into the ground and utilize, it would be helpful for for me at least to know any recommendations you have to get through that. I I it's helpful to know that it's a problem, but if you all are seeing clear paths that we should all have on our radar to take with us, again, wearing the different hats that we wear at our in our local jurisdictions. There's just got to be a better way. And if you all have recommendations on that front, it'd be very useful for us to know that as we're hearing these items. So we've got the business in front of us, obviously, but this this agency will be able to do more faster if the regulatory groundwork is laid ahead of time in order for you all to do that.
And I appreciate that. I don't have anything concrete here, but I I definitely hear that takeaway. And I think I my team specifically works very closely with our leg and merge team. Who's intimately involved in a lot of these and then both at the state level and local level. So I think that's a good takeaway that staff can have is to come back to the board with, you know, whether that's a report or some kind of pocket point or updates about, yes, here we've identified this is a problem. Here's where we see the roadblocks are. Here's where we can see lower influence helping us with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I mean, the the more concrete, the better, right?
Yes.
But for X, Y, and Z barriers, we would have been able to get this done. And I know you probably can't put a specific gate on it, but to the extent that you can project, that's certainly worth us knowing and makes us better advocates, whether that's at the local or state level. And then I'll also just say thank you for the work that you did to make sure that this this work works for the workers that will be doing the work. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Anybody else?
All right. Well, I just want to thank IBW five sixty-nine for their suggested comments. And obviously, it's good that the project will include prevailing wage and eighty percent local labor workforce and the C-ten licensing, which is extremely important for safety reasons. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the item as recommended.
We'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call her on. Director Elor Vara.
Yes.
Director Insunza.
Yes.
Director San Antonio.
Hi.
Director Suzuki.
Yes.
Director Yamani.
Aye.
Flasher Lasson Reamer.
Aye.
Chair Aguirre.
Yes.
Motion carries, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Manny. Thanks. We're gonna, thank you, Mr. T. We're gonna move on to item sixteen, approve energy consulting services agreement with Pacific Energy Advisors, Inc. Up to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand for energy consulting services through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. Byron Bosberg, Chief Commercial Officer, will present that.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Directors. Final item here, homestretch. We'll get there quickly. And big, big thank you first of all, my team, Kenny and Andrea, and Isabel, who's not here, working on EnerSmart agreements as well. A lot of great work done by them tonight. Appreciate all your time considering these items as well. As we get into item number sixteen here, there was a nice segue earlier about plan A, B, and C. So this is the tie to the plan C that Kenny mentioned as well. The next slide, please. Pacific Energy Advisors as background has been a key part of the Community Power Team, probably predating, I think, almost all staff, if not most, most staff here on, you know, in-house, they've been around the CCA movement in California since the early days with Marin and Energy up in twenty-ten, if not before. So they've been a key contributor and in Q R success. It's an organization over over the long haul here with us. They provide, you see the list here, but everything from project planning, portfolio management, energy resource solicitation, as well as rate making and load forecasting support. So they they in early days, they did a whole, a whole host of these services. And then we obviously considered them and selected them through a competitive solicitation process at the time. In twenty twenty-three, we re, as their contract was up for for expiration or for renewal, we decided to kind of right-size at the time as we've been staffing, so we've been, you know, bringing staff in-house, but also systems in-house. Kind of parallel to what Kenny mentioned here, we no longer have the need for consultants to the same degree. So we've been scaling back our commitments here, the scope with Pacific Energy Advisors over time, keeping them in in key strategic roles with us. And again, their their support's been invaluable. But as we do more on our own, we need outside consultants less. So that twenty twenty-three agreement was effective in as of April first, twenty twenty-three. And we're time now to renew or revise our term or agreement again. So this one's a little more complicated, but again, consistent with the theme of scaling back as we do more on our own and need help from the from outside parties less. So but we do expect PEA to remain a long-term partner for us. They have a ton of experience and a ton of just knowledge and experience in very specific areas like like compliance, rate making, and, you know, just overall business consulting and support in the CCA space. So I think we expect them to be a a long-term partner for us, but in a much more limited role going forward. We we, in addition to that, we're kind of building a transition here. And again, you've heard some of the the back and forth with our energy and trade risk management platform, alongside of number twelve that that Kenny presented. As we're bringing that in-house, that replaces the service that PEA has had been providing to us previously through their third-party platform. So what we've got to do here is kind of feather, feather our staffing in, feather our support tools up, and then feather in the new ETRM vendor. And then roll out PEA once we have peril operations established and then are confident where we stand. So the that's the goal of this agreement is to extend PEA on their current scope, so providing all current current support to us through September of this year. And so there's a kind of a phase one, I'll say, of April through September, doing everything they're doing for us now. That's energy trade and risk management. You see here on on the slide, financial modeling, long-term load forecasting, and resource adequacy procurement, compliance support. As the new ETRM system is phased in over the next couple few months, we will then ensure that's up and running. And as it is at Imperial Operations, we will phase out Pacific Energy Advisors with that part of the scope down to below, you'll see after September twenty twenty-five, they will just provide the compliance support in very specialized areas, namely renewable energy and and the Regis tracking tool and platform, as well as RPS compliance through our our next compliance period filing, which is a pretty big one, as well as just trusted advisors support and services in kind of the rate making and and financial advising. So that will be a pretty big step down at the end of September. Next slide, please. So the again, the step down allows us to transition from PEA to in-house services and in-house staff, also for reduction in in fees we pay PEA and saving money where every chance we can to to do this, but also do so reliably. I'll note, and this goes back to our our Plan A, Plan B, Plan C discussion, Plan C here is a three-month option. Again, we've built in plenty of time, as we understand, in in this, in the first phase for September to onboard the new ETRM service and the parallel path to those to make sure that we're in prudent and continuous business operations before phasing out that support from PEA. Should we face any issues, we did negotiate in a three-month option as well for us to extend those services through the end of the year, either in case we just need a couple more months, or in cases Kenny mentioned, we need to go back to a new RFP for those services. So I think we're certainly belt and suspenders redundant here, but again, in in such a critical key role, you know, better, better heavy option. Again, no, no cost to us if we don't exercise that option. I will mention as well, the the total, similar to as Kenny mentioned about the ETRM contract, the total do not exceed amount does include four years under this agreement, as well as this optional ETRM option through through the end of this year. So we do not expect to hit the full do not exceed. The contract itself is a two-year term. It'll have one-year auto renewals if we do not terminate between now and then. But the do not exceed allows us to contemplate the full four years should we need to. But again, we'll manage that and evaluate year by year. With that, I'll I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much, Byron. We're gonna go to public comment if any.
There are none, manager.
Okay, so does the board have any comments or questions? Okay, being none. Like to approve recommendations, Madam Chair. Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Please call her on.
Director Elor Vara.
Yes.
Director Insunza.
Yes.
Director San Antonio.
Hi.
Director Suzuki.
Aye.
Director Yamani.
Aye.
Flasher Lasson Reamer.
Aye.
Chair Aguirre.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you, Manny.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you, Byron. We'll go now to CEO's report.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, board members.
Next slide, please.
Okay, it has been a busy month. The team here at Community Power, on March first, we were at Petco Park with over twenty thousand students and families at the Festival of Science and Engineering. Our outreach team was also at community collaborative meetings in Chula Vista, National City, and Imperial Beach this past month, providing an overview of San Diego Community Power and our role in the community. If you are looking for some good news and haven't had a chance to catch our latest Power One Hundred champion feature, I'd encourage you to head to our social channels or our website, learn more about Elix Charter High School and how one science teacher and his students are shaping a greener future for their school and community. Next slide, please. And thank you also for your help in promoting the most recent community energy grant cycle. Application window closed last week and had over fifty-five applications. That's a record. In partnership with the San Diego Foundation and Alpine Community Energy, we look forward to reviewing these applications for award later this year. On March, on March, I had the opportunity to provide a community power update to the City Council of National City with March fourth. And I look forward to seeing you all in your official chambers soon. In celebration of Women's History Month, I had the opportunity to join Caroline Nguyen, the CEO of San Diego Gas and Electric at the North San Diego Business Chamber's Annual Women's Week to discuss the unique opportunities and challenges that we've encountered throughout our careers, as well as the path that led us to become leaders within the energy industry. Finally, I'd like to take a moment, as this is Women's History Month, to recognize the women whom I have the pleasure of working with alongside many power, including this board here. Everyone, they each offer a diverse perspective that helps us better serve our local communities and the planet. Thank you all for your dedication and hard work. I appreciate a more sustainable San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you so much, CEO Bernard. Very grateful for all your work, and I love that you're so solicited everywhere. Excuse me. As a speaker, it speaks to your knowledge, expertise, and leadership. So very proud of you. Yes, Vice Chair.
I think this is the appropriate time for this. I just had some questions. Felt like it belonged in CA's report. So I was wondering if there you had any updates on whether any of our programmatic work is at all at risk due to regulatory or fiscal changes coming out of Washington or potentially coming out of Washington in light of current budget conversations.
I can ask Jack Clark to answer that question.
I mean, I acknowledging that my my, it's a speculative question. You know, I'm not asking for you to tell us definitively, but more understanding what the current environment is around the reconciliation bill and sort of where things are at with congressional budget appropriations, et cetera.
It's a great question. Thank you for that. We're tracking this very closely, as it can be, as you can imagine. Right now. Right now, certainly we're tracking impacts to supply chains, tariff impacts, tax credit impacts, especially in the power services realm regarding many of our projects. We're seeing some, some impacts right now. I can let Byron and his team speak to those more definitively in terms of programs specifically and your question. We have, we have one program that we're tracking right now very closely. This is a program, a grant award that we were partners on with the California Energy Commission. This is the equitable building decarbonization program, which provides electrification resources and incentives to members of our community here, mostly residential for that program. Typically, what the California Energy Commission will do is they'll funnel Department of Energy funds through the Energy Commission into some of their grant programs. And we're managing and monitoring that right now. There is a potential impact there, but it's still very unclear as to how much of an impact there will be. A lot of those funds were encumbered or committed in the prior administration. So we're, again, it's, it's a little bit foggy right now. Some of those funds may be diminished, but it's, it's a little bit difficult for us to say right now. In terms of, if I could just elaborate a little bit further, we are working very closely with state agencies, both at CARB and the CEC and the Public Utilities Commission on a daily and weekly basis. So in terms of all other third party programmatic support and resources, we should be okay right now. But we are tracking that one in in terms of federal support.
What about like more structural impacts on sort of energy costs? If there's sort of shifts around Inflation Reduction Act funding and and credits?
Yeah, this is, this is the one I'm going to pass over to Byron and we've been.
And that's the big one, obviously.
We're tracking this very closely, but there are impacts and.
And also if you all, I don't want to put you in the hot seat, maybe it's more appropriate, I would ask Karen, if you come back to maybe could get a memo together for our board and maybe come back to our next meeting with an update.
If I may elaborate just one for the moment, we did pull together a full regulatory and legislative update for the board maybe a month ago. And it's a document that we're planning to keep live. It's a working document. As we learn more, we'll continue to share more on a regular basis.
I, that seemed to not have as much on the fiscal side, but I might have, it might have been.
As you can imagine, the first couple of weeks of and months of this new administration, it's, it's been a little bit, you know, chaotic. And so as we get closer to the budget appropriation timeframe, we'll, much more will be made clear.
Okay, that, I mean, that would be, I thought that was a great initial document. I just was curious if we had any updates, because when that was produced, they hadn't gone through their initial round of budget negotiations.
Might be a good idea to bring it like once a month, just until we have appropriations.
Happy to.
Would that be possible? Okay, that would be great. And I, I think this is obviously moving really fast and I'm certainly not looking for definitive answers and won't hold anyone to anything. I'm more interested in reading the tea leaves and risk assessment. Thank you.
Now we're going to move on to director comments if there are any. Seeing none. All right. Thank you, everybody. This meeting is now adjourned.